...Starbuck on February thirteenth. We will start off with pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Joan, if you'd start with the roll call, please?
Mayor Swenson.
Here.
Councillor Gorder.
Here.
Councillor Taif.
Here.
Councillor Bachele.
Here.
Councillor Christensen.
Here.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Is there any additions?
There is.
I think Joan had some additions.
The re-highlighted items on the agenda. Jen Houghen's gonna talk, and Casey Boatain are gonna talk about some events for Heritage Days. And Steve Mathiason, well, actually Steve's not gonna be here, Son and Maya's. And Don Williamson are gonna talk about the garbage disposal changes. And we have an extra resolution at the end.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the additions.
No, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councillor Taif to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councillor Gorder. Are there any questions or further discussion? Hearing non-all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. First item on the agenda is, I don't believe Mathiason is here yet, so we'll move to Larry Van Houtt and Nick Kous from Woodseth.
Okay, just a real short report here on the 2020 road project. Nick is working with MINDOT, trying to come up with a crosswork by Dairy Queen, you know, see what, you know, if they're gonna put one there or not. We have not heard back on MINDOT on that. We're still waiting for MINDOT on the final cost for the assessments. You know, the exhibit I, they call it, attachment I, whatever, to your cooperative agreement. It'll lay out all the costs, then we know what our numbers are to calculate the assessment. So, we keep asking and, you know, we just haven't got the numbers yet. So, as soon as we get those, we will, you know, present to council and then we'll call for the hearing.
Okay.
So, that's the plan there. Then, just a couple of construction items come up. The Nutcracker, some cracked tiles, so we're following up on that. And then Peddler Dan, I, he's concerned with the sidewalks, so we'll keep looking at that. Just see where, so we'll follow up on those. So, that's really it for the report on the 2020 project. Again, till we get those numbers from MINDOT, that's when things are really gonna happen with, you know, calling for the hearing and, you know, review the assessment calcs and all that. And we'll keep going on that.
Did you say you had some pictures for the council, or?
I got some pictures. You wanna look at those, Gary, or?
No, I think if you give them to Joan.
Yep, I'll do that.
Okay.
I'll explain them to you afterwards. I'll show you what I'm looking at.
Sure.
That's for the Nutcracker, so. Then, I guess the other thing was just the lighthouse, you know, replacing that through Marina. You know, we kinda did some, you know, some sketches and some concepts, but really to, really to move it forward, really should decide, you know, what's a budget, you know, that the council's comfortable with for a project like that. And, I don't know, Gary, you wanna talk from there as far as?
Yeah, I just like, you know, Woodseth, architect and engineers have been working on a blueprint and some specs for replacing the lighthouse. And a couple of questions came up is, what's our budget gonna be? And, secondly, the location of it. And, I guess first, on the budget, I think Joan, you said FEMA will give us, like, twenty-six thousand to replace the lighthouse in the original location, and another, how much, thirty thousand?
From FEMA?
Yeah.
No, just for twenty-six. And we got twenty-six from our insurance company.
Okay, so it's fifty-two total. So, we have fifty-two thousand. And the Lake Association has also expressed interest in cooperating with us and with the Starbuck Men's Veterans Auxiliary to raise some money for the lighthouse. And the Lake Association has indicated that they would chip in on it, so. I guess we had some wild estimates, you know, from some contractors, but I'm thinking of a budget of, like, a hundred thousand to get this thing going and nail it down, so.
Now, what could we do if we added park benches or public fishing areas would be eligible for grants? If we kind of made it more of a park in addition to a lighthouse?
It's a possibility. It wouldn't be necessarily a priority for a DNR grant, but it would be a possibility.
So, we could do it at a later date, then? We wouldn't have to do it with initial?
And I think we got that on the agenda.
Okay.
Grants, but, yeah, and those grants, the city would have to pay it, and then we'd be reimbursed if we're approved for any grants. And, so.
My understanding is the, you know, park improvements would be a primary focus of the grant, and the lighthouse could be a secondary.
Yep.
Then, you know, that where you could get your benches and stuff like that, that's kinda what my understanding was. So, yeah, if you're just gonna, just say, I'm gonna do the lighthouse.
Right.
That may be tough, based on, at least the DNR grant we talked about, trying to get a grant for that, but it could be a package deal, and that'd be the secondary focus of it.
Larry, if we did look at, going at it that way, you know, like Dane says, and doing benches and some other things, I don't know what, but, I mean, we've been doing dock improvements all along. Could that fall into part of this too, or?
Basically, it's gotta be, you're generating something for free, you know, that people can use for free. That's gotta be the focus.
Okay.
Again, I don't know if the docks would be a primary, unless you had a fishing pier or something that people could go out and fish. That I could see, Steve, but I'm not just sure just doing docks would be.
Sure.
I think we did try for docks at once, and it didn't fare very well.
I see, like, an observation towers or something like that.
Okay.
There was something like that on here, I think.
Was that Steve?
Something to do with, oh, I lost where it was now, oh, observation areas? If we combined that in with this lighthouse?
Again, like I said, I think with our grant writers telling us that, you know, it's a secondary, I think that would be, if you just primary focus, it's just gonna be a lighthouse.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I think it's not, you know, they got kind of a hit list or, you know, the priority for that funding. And I think lighthouses weren't there, I mean, but it's.
Okay, well.
Again, I think the secondary aspect would be my recommendation, if you're gonna try to, you know, do stuff with the park and that is a secondary, probably have a better shot. Or we could look at other programs, the One Park program we talked about before. You know, that focuses more park, you know, again.
Well, we'd like to get as much easy money as.
I know that. We know that, so.
So, thank you, Larry.
Again, it'd have to be a spinoff type thing, Steve, I think, to try to get some captures of money for that, so.
Well, you know, I think with the Lake Association's help and so forth, that, I think, and the insurance money, I think we could raise that, that much money to get the lighthouse done, and.
Well, we'll see what we can do, yeah. I think originally, if you put it back exactly what we had, I think we're talking like seventy-five, so maybe you could add some amenities to it or something, but you probably can't have a big concrete base and a lot of nice rock facing, but we'll just have to kind of tweak a little bit and try to get some numbers and see what it looks like. Again, I don't wanna design a half a million dollar lighthouse and then that's what the bids come in, that we're all gonna be embarrassed. I wanna know kind of what the target is, and then we can figure out what we can do for that. That's really important.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, is, any other questions or comments from?
Does it have to go back where it was?
Well, that's, that's to be determined, so. And that's the second point I wanted to touch on.
Yeah.
Is, if we put it back in the original location, it would be a little easier, but we have a trailer sitting there now that, and the public access through Hobo Park would not be good, you know, for the public to have any access or whatever to it. If it were on the south side of the Marina, I think it would put out a better beam to all parts of the lake, be more visible, and it would be, it would be something to attract people to come and use and so forth, so.
So, it does look nice, you know, it, I think it'd look nice on the south side, personally.
Oh, yes.
Any other comments from council about location?
We just gotta talk to FEMA, correct?
Right, though, we don't have an answer from FEMA on that, so that would be the one to hang up whether we would still get the FEMA money if we move it.
Yeah, and the camper that's in the original location, they've already made their down payment for the year. I think if we forced them to move, we're probably opening ourselves up to a loss to, you know, potentially, you know, so, you know.
We could ask nicely, too. We could ask them to move nicely, too.
Oh, we could ask them.
Yeah.
There's no guarantee that they would, they bucked it a little bit before when, when they were looking at it and so forth, so, you know.
They're pretty protective of their spots down there, it seems like, so.
And then, I don't know, I'm sure you're not an expert on this, more of a DNR issue, is there any issue with fishing off of either the north or south side of there, if there was a public fishing?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Biggest thing, we gotta just follow the, we had to watch the regulations. Right now, it doesn't sound like we really got much to deal with there.
Okay.
We, yeah, we've talked to the DNR, we've talked to Soil and Water Conservation District, and just gotta follow our shore land ordinance is what we got back.
Mm-hmm.
As long as we do that, I think we're good.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they just, you know, they don't want us putting Rep-Rap along the dike, they told us that, keep the natural vegetation on the lakeshore, on the shore. That was the key thing.
So, I don't know what the council thinks, but I guess I'd like approval to kind of go ahead and look at the, at the budget of a hundred thousand and to locate it on the south side of the Marina if at all possible, so.
I'd make a motion that we look into a budget of a hundred thousand and seeing what options we get back out of bids at that point.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, we have a motion from Councillor Taif to look into the possibility of a hundred thousand dollar budget and, and what other things we can do to raise that money. Seconded by Councillor Gorder. Is there any other comments or questions, or?
Is that, maybe one clarification, is that total budget, or is that just construction budget, Gary? Just so I know.
I think we're looking at building it, construction.
Okay, good. 'Cause I gotta get soil borrowings done and a few things like that.
Yeah, so, okay. If there's no other questions or discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
No, I don't think they're here yet.
Mathiason isn't here yet, is he? Okay. Next item on the agenda is Tom and Judy Corey. They wanted to talk.
We can't hear nothing back here, it's my ears.
It's hard to hear you.
I'm sorry?
It's hard to hear you.
Hard to hear me?
Yeah.
Oh.
Come on up.
Yeah.
Where are you?
Sorry about that.
We've got an issue with a fence the north of us.
Mm-hmm.
Not, we need to know where the property pins are and why that fence is. We've got pictures here showing that the fence is three feet from the building of Chris Burks, and.
Is that the corner property?
We can't back out of the.
We can't back out, we get stuck all the time.
Away from our garage.
And we've almost hit both their fences, Melody's and then Chris's. And it's impossible to back out of there in the wintertime. We've gotten stuck many times. Had to get somebody over to pull us out, it costs fifty bucks each time. And we're sick of it, I mean, and we haven't hit their fence yet, but we've splattered on it, we bumped it, and if we hit it, we're gonna have to pay for those fences.
Hmm, okay, yeah.
We put in a fence two years ago.
Just too close to the alley.
We put a fence in two years ago, and you can see it on them pictures, because that's the ones I gave you. So, ours is ten feet back from the pole, which is a property line. And that blue shed is only three feet from that fence line, if that's a property line.
When, you said these fences were put up two years ago?
I.
When were these fences put up?
How long ago did they put theirs?
I have no idea, five years. And this organ, it's been in here as long as I've lived in that house, in twelve years.
And we put up a fence in our backyard. Ours is set way back.
Did you have some pictures, Joan?
I just went here.
Oh, okay. Does everybody have one? I guess I didn't see it.
Yep, everybody's got.
And the snowplows barely get through there.
It says on this sheet that we've got the required rear yard setback is ten feet from either.
It doesn't show the.
Alley right, right away is present.
This was done before.
So, we need to know what the alley right away is.
Mm-hmm, okay.
We have our permit here, so there's no reason their permits can't be pulled.
That's probably where we're going with this, is it?
What?
This is probably where we're going, we're going with this, is we'll probably have planning and zoning, take a look at it, and look at the property lines and the setbacks and the ordinance and so forth. They'll make a recommendation to council, and I think, like I told Judy before when I visited with her, probably nothing's gonna happen till spring anyway, you know, so, so we could bring.
Yeah, we understand that.
What's that?
We brought this up, not to the council meeting many times, but to the people that work in the city office and the city, the coordinators or whatever, that do the marking of the prop, measuring all of the properties and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And nothing's been done.
Okay.
This has been going on three years now.
Yeah. I mean, this is out every year, we're having this problem.
Well.
And we can't, we can't get out.
Yeah, to be honest with you, this is the first I've heard of it, it was this year, so, you know, we'll bring it up with planning and zoning, and they'll review it and review the ordinance and so forth, and, you know, if there's a violation, we'll try and correct it, so.
What is this, what is the alley right away?
What is the what?
What's the alley right away? What's the distance in the alley?
I believe it's ten feet, isn't it?
We'll bring it up with planning and zoning.
Yeah, I believe it's ten feet from setback.
Yeah, so if you're twenty-two from seventeen, then you gotta move it back seven feet.
Yeah, because, yeah, because there's no way there, ten feet, no way.
Yeah, so.
Like I said, is that building the property line, that zoning commission can bring that up.
Yeah.
Well, what do we measure it, Tom?
Well, he's got to measure by twenty-two feet from my pole.
From our pole.
And the pole is, uh.
Yeah, about ten feet from, or eleven from the center of the alley, I think, or something, the light pole or whatever, yeah.
And garbage truck can't get to there hardly at all.
Mm-hmm.
It's the plow, too, that they, you know.
Yeah, it was dumped in our yard because they have no place to put it.
They have nowhere to put it, so it goes right on our property, and then we really can't get out, so it's, it's, it's a big problem.
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna solve anything tonight, so, like I said, we, we wanna run it through the planning and zoning and.
We want something done with it.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
How long has that shed been there?
Oh, jeez, we've been there going on thirteen years.
I'm assuming that shed's been there ever since.
It was there since we moved in the house.
And the fence and the shed are flush? So, you'd assume that's a property.
Yeah.
Yep.
And there's a picture showing that the fence is three feet back from the shed.
Okay, yep, zoning, planning, we'll have to look at it and, you know.
Yeah, their meeting is the first Tuesday of every month, so, you know.
Do we have to attend that?
You're welcome to attend that, too, so.
It's not required that you attend, but you can attend if you'd like.
Sure. Nine o'clock in the morning, so, on Tuesday, yeah, so.
Yeah, that's all you can do.
Okay, I appreciate you coming and talking to the council and making them aware of what your concerns are and stuff, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. No Mathiason? Okay, next item on our agenda is Roger Abberg wants to talk about park shelter adoption program, so.
Just very quickly, I handed out something to you. This is in no way saying that the city doesn't take good care of the park or anything, but, you know, those buildings, if you look at those buildings, just very briefly, our men's auxiliary, along with the Brang Foundation and stuff, put new roofs on almost all of those park buildings. And mostly, the, other than general maintenance, the work that's been done down there on the shelters and stuff has been done either by our auxiliary or whatever. It makes sense to me, if we went down there and walked through those shelters, most of them aren't what, what the original tent was. In other words, you look at the nicest shelter, which is the long one, you know, there was a grill in there at one point and whatever. So, this just simply says, would the city be open to getting sponsors for these buildings? Not to replace the city, but, as you can see there, I put in this Starbuck graduating class in nineteen sixty-eight. We are having our fifty-fifth year reunion, we've got a lot of classmates here. I have not said a word to them about this, 'cause I wanted to make sure that I talked to the city first. But, if that shelter, for instance, was available for us to adopt, or for anybody to adopt, businesses or, or anybody, I just kind of laid out, you know, you can see where it'd be pretty simple to go down there, spring and fall, make a little punch list if you had six, eight, ten people. If you can get your classmates, I'm just gonna use that as an example to throw in twenty bucks apiece or something, get Brang, you could make that shelter much nicer. And so, and, you know, what's the matter with it? Well, my wife walks all the time, there's no lock on the women's bathroom. You know, it's little things, it's not a big deal, but at the same time, there's a lot of little things that could be improved to make those park buildings look like the original intent, instead of letting them go until they need help and then taking it. So, that's the concept. I took it here first, because I'm learning that if you talk about things, a lot of times somebody else has already talked about it, of course, and so pretty soon you got a kind of a mix of, oh, yeah, no, we're doing that, or, oh, yeah, we thought about that, or whatever. And so, this is just a proposal, that's all it is today, for you guys to look at it, discuss it whenever, and if you think that this is something, you know, I, I don't, I guess I can't understand why even, like, the bank or somebody wouldn't adopt the shelter. There's simple structures that require a little paint now and then, and a little upkeep. The Lions Club at one point, well, it's still now there, the Lions Club has a decal, if you look on the backside of that sheet on the gable end, that says sponsored by the Lions Club. So, at one point, this was kind of the thought. And obviously, the one that, that really needs some help, and we've talked about it, many of us, including the city here and stuff, is the Ban Shell. That's probably the most unique building down there, but if you could get, well, our auxiliary's a pretty good example, but I'd, I guess, I guess that's, unless you have any questions, that's just what I'm thinking. So, what do I expect? I just expect the council to say, you know, we, we got this, or go ahead and run with it, one or the other.
Roger, first of all, I wanna thank you for coming forward with this, because I know you've been on park boards before.
Yeah.
And, and you get what goes on in the big metropolitan cities as well as the small ones, 'cause you are certainly a resident here. I think this is a great idea, and I know the VFW Veterans Auxiliary has already helped out with a lot of projects in town, and they're always raising funds to do good things in the community, and, and this might get the ball rolling on adopting another shelter.
Yeah, and again, I'm not, I'm not necessarily involving the men's auxiliary in this, certainly could be, you know, I would think we'd take on one of the bigger shelters that require more work. But I, I would like to, we're gonna, our class reunion is gonna be, we're gonna start down in the park on August sixth, which is the day of the car show and the day of the artisan show, so people got something to do down there. We've got the little shelter down by the lake, the oldest shelter, I think, reserved, but I thought, oh, that's not till August, but when I send out letters to our classmates, I would hint on this and introduce it to them, and I, you know, you just think, yeah, why wouldn't they? And again, there's how many other classes from, ours is nineteen sixty-eight up to nineteen ninety-one, you know, you got classes that if there's any group, it would be kind of a nice way to do it, other than maybe the grandstand, 'cause that, that requires more work, but, so, okay?
Any other comments from the council, or?
No, I like the idea, and I think we should maybe put that out there, I don't know if we put that in the faithful section of adopting or.
Well, and again, at this point, that's, that's the thing that I find confusing about recommending anything, is that all of a sudden, nobody's got an idea that you should put it out here and put it out there, and pretty soon, everybody's got the thought that this is gonna happen, and then if it don't happen.
Right.
It's not a good deal. So, this is just simply a proposal to the council, and if the council or the city says, we think that's a good program to adopt, then let's plan it a little better.
Okay.
And, and figure out, because you could run into things like, for example, let's say the class of sixty-eight gets that shelter, well, you could run into, why didn't we get a chance at that shelter?
Yeah, I.
So, you gotta talk about that stuff, but I don't think we wanna do that here tonight, and I, and like I said, so I think this is just a presentation to, for you guys to shuffle it around, and I don't think the city has to be involved in those shelters any more than they are now. In other words, they're still gonna cut the grass, they're still gonna take care of the plumbing and those bad, or whatever.
I think there's still have to be some.
Our role has not changed, our role is the enhancement role.
I think there's still have to be some oversight, though, because we wouldn't want, you know, you coming in and deciding, hey, we're gonna paint the shelter purple type thing.
Oh, it says that in that.
Okay.
It says that in there, that anything needs to be okay by the city, other than things like cleanup and repairs and stuff, but yeah, if we wanted to paint the shelter or, or anything like that, yeah, I, I agree totally. Just one more comment, like, two shelters, we just, our men's auxiliary just worked on the white shelter, now that's just as you come into the park. That one, that one got ahead of us on the roof, so that's a brown roof, all the rest of the roofs are marooned down there. But last year, our guys got together and they re-sided it and stuff. Now, they, you know, if you go to that park shelter, there's a, there's an end, I'm gonna call it now a storage area. It's not what it was intended to be, it was intended to be a kitchen, to serve. It's got a drop-down deal, it was intended to be able to serve out of there on a family reunion or whatever. So, that's, that's one example of when the, whoever built that shelter had a better plan for it than what we have today. And that's, that's the same thing with the one I mentioned, because that end wall there, that at one point was a grill, and now it's kind of a few supply wood laying in there. It's not bad, but it could be so much better.
So, Roger, would you like an answer from the council before your class reunion, or?
Well, yeah, I think, I mean, I don't see any reason why, you know, if it goes till even next month, I don't see any reason why. I don't see any reason why we can't give it a A or a name. Um, it's not that big of a request. And it seems like a good idea. You know, like I said, the name thing is, is, I come up with all kinds of ideas, but a lot of times, the ideas are in action. Somebody else already working on it, you know? And so then all of a sudden, you find out, okay, they're working on that and stuff, so enough said.
So just one thought here, Roger. Um, so if, if, you know, and your thought here of adopting that.
That shelter.
That shelter, and, and we throw it out there to whoever, and they come in and say, well, jeez, we, we want this one. Somebody's got to decide who's gonna get it, you know? I mean.
Well, there's only a reason that, but obviously, at this point, over the last forty years, nobody has asked about it. And so I think you, you as a council just decide that, that, maybe that's the only one that gets adopted. But when I send out letters to our classmates and stuff, I would like to indicate, uh, it has a possibility.
I would guess that anybody that has graduated from here would be very interested in contributing because everybody uses those shelters. They do. And I like the idea. I, I don't know what the rest of them think, but I think we should pursue it as a council.
I agree.
Well, I think it's a good idea, and I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Roger to pursue it, and, and we'll, uh, see how it goes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from myself and Councilman Gorder to authorize them to proceed, and, uh, is there any other questions or discussion?
Would there be like a little charge? Like you just say, I wanna do one. Are we gonna have like a little, what I wanna see? Permit? Like the class of sixty-eight, we're gonna give them a permit for twenty dollars with the little rules to keep this baby dolled up? I don't think it's all that necessary, but it's better to think about now and later.
Well, yeah, I think, you know, that's something we could put together pretty easy, I would think.
Yeah, as Roger stated in his, in his letter to the council here.
Some of the rules or.
Is the, the council would have final approval on what their intentions are, so.
Would we have to create a committee then for this specific shelter, or?
It's a good idea, Dane. I, I nominate you to start to head it up.
No, I think it would be up to whoever adopts it to take, you know, to, to run it and comply with the rules, so. Okay, if there's no more, further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. I believe we have some, uh, people here from Mathiasen now, so. A few gentlemen would like to come forward and, and, uh.
Good evening. I'm Mike Christensen, and I'm here on behalf of Mathiasen Disposal. Steve was supposed to come tonight, but he caught a bug today. So thanks for squeezing us in this evening. This is Don Williamson with, um, West Central Sanitation.
Thanks for staying today, Mayor and City Council. Um, we've known and worked around shared borders with Mathiasens for over forty-some years. And, uh, in fact, my first check came from Steve's dad, Clarence, but, uh, we've been in Wilmer, West, I own West Central Sanitation, and I'm the, uh, we've been in business for forty-four years. We've been in Alexandria and Glenwood areas for over twenty years. And Steve has decided to sell his business and retire, and, uh, couldn't talk Mike into keep doing it, I guess, so. Mike's the son-in-law. Steve was gonna be here today. We did visit the city offices on Friday, Steve and I did, and talked to your clerk. So we're requesting that you would allow us to, um, be assigned their agreement to serve the city of Starbucks. We don't anticipate any changes of any kind at this time. The way our company works is if there are ever changes that need to be made, like scheduling or something like that, we would come to the city council and request to work with you for any kind of changes. We don't just assume there's, a change can happen. We always request it and work with the council, so.
Would, would there be much change in the scheduling as far as garbage and recycling pickup or containers as well?
No, no, sir. Containers, we, we thought we'd just leave the same as is, unless they're broken or cracked and they call, then we'll replace them as normal for no charge. You know what I mean? That would be all. And as far as scheduling, it's gonna take us three, four, five, six months to figure out if there needs, would ever need to be a date change. Typically, we wouldn't try to change the city contract. We would probably maybe change rural areas or unincorporated areas first on scheduling if there needed to be a change. And there again, we would come to you first and ask if we could make that change.
How about contracts? Uh, is it a yearly contract, or, or how does that work? Because, uh, in the past, uh, Mathiasen has been really good to deal with in all aspects.
I believe you're five-year.
Five years, I believe. Yeah.
Okay.
And we, we typically have five to ten-year contracts in all the communities we serve, so it's not been an issue.
Do you foresee any change immediately as far as their contract would go?
No, sir.
So it'd start now and be for the next five years?
Yeah, they, uh, West Central Sanitation effectively took over last Monday. So the sale closed on February third, so everything should go as normal as is exactly.
So we'd get a contract saying, for the council to approve?
Say that again, sir.
We would be getting a contract for the council to.
We could certainly, we can certainly update it and work with your city attorney or city clerk and do that for you, for, for your review, yes.
So will you be retaining any of the Mathiasen employees?
They're all retained right now.
Good. Yeah.
They're all retained.
Yeah, that's great.
Do you currently service any, um, businesses or anything in Starbucks?
Yes, yes, sir, we do. And, um, I, I can't name them all. We do the school system. We've done the Minnesota schools for many years. Mike probably knows which ones I'm in town and more than I do, but.
He's got a handful in town. So, I mean, that's just kind of like I talked about, it, it goes to show the relationship that we've had with West Central over the years is, they're not here to step our toes. Someone likes their service, and it's like, all right, you know? But they honor the contract, and we've kind of been respectful neighbors for years.
Sounds like a good transition to me.
It really is. Um, so, we think so, and Steve thinks so, and if you know Steve, it's.
So do we need a motion to approve this transition thing at this point?
I think we can wait till we get the contract.
Okay. It'll be offered. Yeah.
We're doing it, so.
Yeah, everything, everything runs just normal.
Would we still call the, is there gonna be a Benson office?
Yeah, everything stays the same, so if you have anything, yeah, call. Call myself or Jackie at the office and if I'm around.
Sounds good.
And then eventually, I believe that the phones will roll over somewhere else, but I mean.
To Wilmer, probably eventually, Wilmer Alec, but, um, in the meantime, right, but the phone numbers will stay the same. We've bought the phone number too, so eventually, when there isn't more of a transition, three, four months down the road, as far as office personnel or something, it'll roll over to our phone banks too, so.
So you, I think you mentioned that the schedule for the city would stay the same for now.
Would the billing stay the same?
For the city?
Well, I, I could, I could call. I mean, I'm a resident, I'm a resident, so I didn't know if it's still gonna be, because I pay online. I mean, is all that gonna stay the same?
You, you are a resident in town?
No, I'm north of Starbucks, five miles.
So you have separate service, like?
Mathi- I.
Through Mathiasen?
Yep.
Yeah. So that stays the same until?
There, okay.
Until we get things transitioned over to them. They have a separate software system, so if you have anything. If you have anything like Auto Pay, or if you just have ACH taken out of your account, you'll have to reset that up with West Central.
There'll be an instruction letter going out for that.
So communication will be.
For those that are bill direct.
Yeah, but as far as the city, obviously, it's built through the city, and that's always stays the same. We'll make sure the transition's smooth, and Steve and I and Jackie will be around for at least probably ninety days or more, so.
Yeah. Steve lives not too far from Starbucks.
Yeah, he's on the lake now.
Well, congratulations, and, uh.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to the same good service.
We'll do that. We'll do that. If not, you call me. We'll fix it.
Yeah, you'll give me, you'll give it yourself.
I think like Joan said, as soon as we get a contract, we can.
Sure. We'll follow up with that.
We can, uh, get it before the council.
Well, thank you. That's really good to hear, because you usually don't hear the good stuff, you know? So I really appreciate that. I enjoy coming to Starbucks. I volunteer to do the Starbucks presidential. I think it's fun. Yeah. Yeah. Like I said, so you know Steve, and to be able to transition to these guys, he is all about it, so really good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
As well.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting us in.
Next on the agenda is Jen Haugen and Casey Boutein, I believe, uh, want to talk about Heritage Days and the fire department.
Yeah, I'm just here, um, actually for two raffles. One of them is March fourth here at the Starbucks Community Center for Megan Klein. She has four, for, um, stage four colon cancer, so there's been a committee planning the event. So we are using our gambling license for their raffle, um, for that night. So they've been selling tickets. I'm sure some of you have already purchased some. So I'm, I have to do this, my due diligence, so Minnesota Gambling knows that the city approved for us to use our license off-site, um, for the raffle. And our second raffle is, um, for the Starbucks Fire Department. We are doing that raffle, um, and that'll be, uh, Friday, June thirtieth, so we'll start selling tickets for that. And again, that's another off-site, because it'll be at the Fire Hall during the pulled pork feed, during Heritage Days. So those are the two raffles off-site that we'll be doing.
Okay. I understand, uh, Klein's father was a member of the fire department for a long time?
So when we were approached, it was not even a second thought. That's just one less thing for them to worry about. We would handle, we handle everything, the tickets, the money, everything that night for that aspect of the event. There'll be like silent auction, there'll be a band, um, free will for, I think Stacy Gertis is doing the, the dinner or the food. So it's just gonna be a great event and help her with some of her, obviously, medical bills because of this, so. Yeah. It's like helping a fellow fire family. You just always do it, so that's what we enjoy doing, so.
Yeah, I was, happened to be fire, fire chief at the time that Harvey passed away, and, uh, so, um, appreciate everything you guys are doing. And, uh, I'd make a motion that we approve those permits.
We actually have resolutions coming up later, so.
Yeah, um, the other piece that I have is, uh, related to the June thirtieth. We have the, uh, Fire Department Relief Association, actually, will, we want to do our, uh, pulled pork feed and the street dance. Again, it'll be, street dance, I think, is what we need approval for, just to be able to use the space in, uh, eight to twelve P M after the pork, pulled pork feed. And then, I don't know, I, I got kind of thrown into this, so I don't know exactly the, uh, the logistics here, but, uh, we'll need a one-day liquor license eventually, so I don't know if that all gets tied together. We need to come back for that.
We can just, council, can you give their approval if they approve tonight? We can go from there.
Okay. Who are you getting the liquor license through for a one-day permit? Are you, is it your own organization that will be selling? Yeah, yeah, we, we buy the, uh, buy all the beer and alcohol from the, uh, from the vendors that we, I don't, yeah, from the liquor store and, uh, I can't remember the beer one. They change hands, yeah, change hands, but, um, so we buy it and have, have a few of our members go through the server training. And will it be like, like, last year with the security at the gates and stuff like that? Yeah, yeah, basically same as what we did last year. The what?
Can we run it? They get it through the city and then they're successful?
Yeah.
We pay them.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah, I don't think we really have any other changes. Same band we have booked, so should be pretty much the same as last year.
We need a resolution for that, or?
Nope, just a motion to say it's okay for now.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the liquor license. The one-day liquor license for the Starbucks Fire Department for the Heritage Days, uh, Street Dance.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion from, uh, Councilman Gorder to approve the, uh, the, uh, uh, dance and also the liquor license. And did you mention the, the raffles also, or? I think that's coming.
I did, but there's, uh, there's a resolution coming for that.
Seconded by Councilman Balko. Uh, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the, uh, issue of the, uh, ownership of the Viking boat. This boat was, uh, built in, uh, North Carolina, I believe, and, uh, and was donated to Starbucks, uh, but it's been under a private ownership and, uh, and, and they have to insure it and so forth, and, uh, um, so we, we looked into whether the, the city could own it. And, uh, uh, what we got back from the League of Minnesota Cities was that, uh, that it be on premises when it's out of the water to, on premises the city owns or rents, and that the watercraft is less than twenty-six feet long, and it's not being used to carry persons or property for a charge. And, uh, uh, this boat meets all of those qualifications. I, I went down and they're proposing to store it at, uh, Kevin's Cave. I don't know if you're all familiar with that on South Twenty-Nine. I went down there and looked at space with Blaine Peterson, and, uh, he assured me that only he and his, uh, brother-in-law, I believe it's his brother-in-law, have keys to the place, so not everybody has keys or anything, so. So I guess, uh, you know, and, and the Depot Society uses this, the, uh, the, um, Starbucks Men's Veterans Auxiliary uses it. And anybody else in Starbucks would, you know, if they needed it or wanted it, they could use it and so forth, so. I guess I'd like to propose that the, uh, city accept the donation of the Viking boat and that.
You need a motion for that, Gary?
The, uh, the storage fees would be about three hundred a year. Uh, that is gonna be split between the Depot Society and the Men's Auxiliary. The insurance, uh, is negligible. Uh, that'd be through the League of Minnesota Cities and, uh, and I think there might be some registration fee or something, but I think the, uh, auxiliary and, uh, the depot could take care of that also, so. Shouldn't be any cost to the city, per se, and, uh, so.
I'd make a motion that we accept the ownership and everything that goes with it, as you explained, Gary.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Gorder to accept the donation of the Viking boat by the city and to insure it through the League of Minnesota Cities and, and store it at Kevin's Cave. And, uh, uh, seconded by Councilman, uh, Tafe. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. I just wanted to, to mention that the League of Minnesota Cities is, uh, has a, an elected leaders institute in Alexandria, March third and fourth. I think Joan, you said it was like three hundred dollars?
Three hundred fifty.
Three fifty. Unfortunately, the, 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 uh, program for the newly-elected leaders is full, as I understand it. So, uh, but I think it's something, if there's, if it's available in the future, that anybody who hasn't been to it might, uh, benefit from that or enjoy that. So I would like to go to the, to the advanced program, which is the same days, March third and fourth. And, uh, I guess I would need the council's approval to, uh, to spend the money to do that, so.
How much does that one cost?
Three fifty.
That one is three fifty as well?
Same, so, yep.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Gary going to the advanced program.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve my attendance at the, uh, Advanced, uh, League of Minnesota Cities. advanced, uh, League of Minnesota Cities Leadership Program. Seconded by Councilman Ta- uh, Christensen. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is an update on the meeting with the Minne- Minnewaska Area Schools on daycare, Glacial Hills and Win Academy. And, uh, Dane attended the meeting with me at, um, and, uh, so they went over this proposal and I don't know, Dane, if you want to say anymore about the, the meeting or, or whatever.
Sure. So, uh, Mayor Swenson and I, along with Pope County Commissioner Gordy Wagner, were invited to attend the meeting to discuss the future of daycare and elementary school and public education for Starbuck and largely Pope County. Um, I don't know if any of you know, but come June, Kingdom Kids is losing, um, access to their building. Um, it was rented through the church. I think that was from the Lick Foundation for a dollar a year. Um, that is going away. So now they are looking for a new building to host daycare out of. Um, the school, Minnewaska Area School Board has proposed a possible solution of Kingdom Kids partially coming over to Starbuck, um, and then also relabeling, um, them as Lakes Area enrichment center. So I don't want to get into the specific proposals because there were several of the different options that are out there. But one of the people at the meeting did say that, you know, we're in a daycare shortage nationwide and I for one can vouch for that. So bringing more daycare and more preschool to our area is going to be a good thing for our entire community, you know, both for, for the parents and for the children. To have somewhere where it's local, you know, quality, affordable, um, education. You know, I know some people that have to quit their jobs to be able to stay home with their kids because they can't, daycare's too far away or there's no availability of it. So, um, like I said, I'm not going to get into the specific details of what's going to happen with Win Academy and all that stuff because that is ultimately up to the school board. But I am, you know, very invested in the decision-making process of this and encouraging, um, more access. So. I don't know, Gary, if there's anything else you wanted to add?
Well, I was just going to add that from an economic standpoint, you know, I think as one of the school board members mentioned, you know, parents want to have their kids closer to where they work and, uh, they don't want to drive twenty or thirty minutes if there's an emergency or a problem with the child. And, uh, you know, I, I noticed that Kingdom Care in, in Glenwood, from the email that we got, uh, would be providing, uh, daycare for birth, uh, up to thirty, three or four. And I think then the school board or the school system would do the preschool after that. And I assume it would be the same in, in Starbuck.
It would be, yes. So it'd be from birth, birth until graduation, um, all under the umbrella of the Minnewaska Area School District. So there'd be a partnership with the New Kingdom Kids, which is that Lakes Area enrichment center.
And I, I know Win Academy is, has to lease property and they can't own the property. And, uh, I talked to one of the, uh, uh, one of the people that was instrumental in building that, uh, or getting that building for, uh, I shouldn't say Win Academy, I meant Glacial.
Glacial Hills Elementary.
Um, but I talked to one of the people who were instrumental in getting the Glacial Hills building and, uh, so he's going to get back to me with some more information, comments and so forth. So, uh, I think the school board would like to make some preliminary discussion or decisions within the next three months. Um, and, uh, this probably wouldn't happen for a year or two, but, uh, this is, they've got the high school and I think they had Wedsith go through the high school, the old high school and, and, uh, review the facility and see what it, condition it was in. And I, I think they're pretty happy with the second floor. The basement is another issue, but, uh, and I think it needs a new boiler. But one thing that, you know, to, rather than building a new building to accomplish this goal, we could use the space that we got for a lot less money. And I think, uh, Glacial Hills has also been looking at building a, a gymnasium. Well, the old high school has got gymnasium, uh, you know, gymnasium and stuff. So. There's some good points, but like Dane said, there's other factors involved and so forth too that, uh, are going to pop up. And, uh, I think a lot of people are concerned that, yeah, if we go with this and, you know, after a few years, the school board's going to back out and pull it out of Starbuck and so.
And that would be under the condition that, um, Glacial Hills Elementary rolled up under the, um, Minnewaska Area Schools umbrella. And so that's one of the propositions that was discussed. It's not anything that's been decided on. But I know from parents that have come to me said that it originally was part of the Minnewaska Area Schools, the one that's in charge of it was, you know, and then they broke off. So I don't know if it's, if the city needs to get involved to kind of test the waters with the community to see if, you know, if the school district is going to come in and do something that's going to upset all of the parents in Starbuck. Is that something where Starbuck needs to kind of have a public hearing on it? Or is that something where it's completely out of the city council's control and that's all on the school board? Because I, you know, if, if we, they, the school board goes through, out through this plan and acquires Glacial Hills Elementary and all of a sudden, all of them drop out and their plan falls through, you know, where are we, where are we stuck then? You know, it could cause, we, we need to make sure parents aren't bored or it could cause a huge ripple down that ends up causing a worse situation than where we're at. So.
I, I think Jody Lund, the director of Glacial Hills, is working with her board and parents to see what they want.
Okay.
I just interviewed her a week ago.
Okay.
So they won't do anything unless it's what their parents want.
Well, and it's, you, there's no way you're going to get a hundred percent agreement on it, but.
But I, you know, so, you know, to alleviate your worry on that.
Right.
Don't think they'll be in trouble.
Okay, so you don't feel like a public hearing would be necessary for us to have?
No, I think it's the school's business.
The school has sent out several, uh,
Yeah.
phone interviews or.
Yeah, she does a really good job getting the calls.
They had a public, yeah, a week ago.
Oh, they did?
At the school without parents.
Okay.
And it's, it's basically been pushed out to like July, like not, they, they, they said that, and my wife's on the school board too at Glacial Hills. Um, they're not making any decision one way or another until before July.
Okay.
There's a lot of hoops to.
And they just got to prepare it themselves.
The buildings, the finances. It's not, it's not going to happen real quick.
Yeah, well, it sounds like there's a lot of moving pieces throughout Kingdom Kids and Win Academy and the school district. So.
It got, it got slowed down like last week, big time.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to let the public know that I'm, you know, involved with this issue and will be staying on top of it to provide what's best for our residents. So.
That's great.
Yeah, keeping a school in Starbuck, keeping it, that'd be one way or another. You guys can be done.
Yep.
Yeah, good. Is there any questions or anything? We just wanted to bring it up, uh, so everybody's aware of it and, uh, so. I think there was an article in the paper about it. So.
Mine was on Glacial Hills. So I don't know.
Oh, okay. Um, next item on the agenda is, is, uh, another Heritage Days item. Uh, it's the, uh, this Heritage Days will be the fortieth anniversary of the world's largest LFSA. And as it lays on to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, they've been discussing new ideas and additional ideas for, uh, for Heritage Days this year. And, uh, um, one thing they wanted to emphasize was this fortieth anniversary of the world's largest LFSA, which I understand is still, uh, the world record. And, uh, uh, I just wanted to bring it up to the council because I thought it might be appropriate if at some point we issue a proclamation, uh, recognizing the Depot Society and the fortieth anniversary and perhaps give them a plaque that they can display in their LFSA Hall of Fame or whatever. So. Anyway, uh, enough about that. I don't know, is Ryan gonna? Ryan, did, are you talking about the police report or?
Um, no, I'm not.
Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda is Randy Peterson for Water and Sewer.
Hello, I got all kinds of stuff to talk about tonight. Um, we're moving forward, um, as far as I understand, uh, with switching the wastewater plant over to, um, liquid disinfe- infection from gas chlorine. Um, we were getting a ten-dollar-a-month charge per tank that we had. So we were getting charged a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars a month just for having the tanks of gas on hand. Um, Hawkins, um, implemented that new charge last year. So we looked into switching over to liquids so we can get away from that charge. Um, our gas feed equipment is all pretty much seen better days and needs replacement anyway. So now was a good time to switch over. I got an estimate last year, um, I think I brought it to the council. It was about twenty-three hundred dollars for two pumps and, uh, the tank for the liquid. Um, I would get at least an extra pump of each one. So we had a spare on hand. So I don't know, I, I would guess around five thousand would probably take care of, um, the cost for getting it switched over. Um, I did reach out to PCA and filled out several applications and got approval right away. Um, so it's, we're approved to, um, switch over to the liquid. Um, I talked to Hawkins and, uh, we got a new chemical supply guy. Um, so he was going to touch base with Dan, who gave me the quote. He had a file, uh, with everything from last year that we had talked about and they were going to work on getting what we need on their end also. So, um.
So the, the gas costs five, five dollars a tank and, but.
It was ten dollars just to have the tank. They were running into issues where their tanks were s- in places for too long and they were short on tanks and they had to spend all this money to get more tanks. So they started charging places.
Hmm.
Ten dollars if they had it over thirty days. Well, for us to have, it takes, let's say, a month to feed a tank, but yet you got to have another one there just in case this one runs out. You got two on the stand and another one there. And that's just for chlorine and the same for, um, the, um, SO2. So. We have quite a few tanks on hand.
The liquid is cheaper than, uh?
They, they're not in tanks, so there's not that additional charge. The liquid is a little bit more expensive, um, in the long run. But, um, not compared to replacing the, the gas chlorine equipment. That gets, you know, we'll probably spend fifteen to twenty thousand easily on replacing our gas feed equipment, um, where this is only a couple thousand dollars for the liquid. So, um, it makes more sense to just go with the liquid.
Okay.
So.
So you're kind of waiting for a quote then?
Nope, nope. I guess, um, of, approval, we, I, we did get approval in, I think, July last year. So, um, I'm just letting you know that, um, we are moving forward with it. If you would like to approve it again, that's, that's fine too. But, uh, just keeping everybody on the same page here. So. Uh, also our MPDS permit, or wait a minute. Uh, we'll go to the MPDS permit. Uh, it's, we're in the renewal stage. We did get our draft permit, uh, last week, kind of read over it. And I guess everything that I kind of noticed on it seemed pretty straightforward and pretty similar to our last one. Uh, so there wasn't anything that really stood out. Um, there's a bunch of steps we kind of got to go through. We'll get a chance to review it and then it'll go for, um, public review and everything else. So we're moving along with it. We also did get, uh, two generators from the D N R. Um, thank you for Doug Noise and all the work he did and phone calls and everything else. Uh, we were fortunate enough to get a sixty K W for this entire building. Uh, it should power everything we need here. And we also got a ten K W, um, that I think I'll probably end up just getting a small trailer for. It's not a very big one. Um, put it on a trailer and then we'll kind of have a portable one that we can move around to lift stations if we needed, uh, and that kind of thing. So, um.
Is the D N R going to be able to provide any trailer or anything or don't know yet or?
Uh, no, no, we just got the generators for them. Uh, we got them for two thousand dollars for the two generators and that was delivered. And they put brand-new batteries in them and the batteries were four hundred dollars a piece. So. Yeah. Yeah. And he fired them both up. They fired right off.
Yeah, the other one, uh, we had twenty-one hundred dollars on.
Yep. 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 So now, uh, I have been talking to several electricians to kind of have them come, take a look at it, like to get some prices or quotes to kind of see what, what we can do to kind of install them. Uh, they're more of a portable military style. They're not exactly made to set right outside a building and hook up. So there might be a little bit of finagling that needs to happen. But we'll try and get everybody on the same page here and figure out what's going to work the best to make it work. Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I couldn't even guess what they would cost if you ordered brand-new ones, if you could even get brand-new ones. Yep. Yeah. So that's great. So. Uh, let's see. I did order lumber for, um, our docks. It is half-price of what it was last year, like exactly. The boards are half-price. So, um, the, I called them and they said it was starting to go up a little bit. I said, just get it for us. Um, we went true lumber again. Um, they were the cheapest again. Um, uh, it came to two thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Uh, we did have some foam left from last year and a few boards left from last year. So it's, it's not the full amount that we normally get, but, uh, it was still a lot, lot cheaper. I think last year it was like seventy-five hundred dollars. So. Um, I'd like to talk about the bulk water rates that I had mentioned, uh, last month. Um, I did call Glenwood and asked them what they do. And the rumor that I had heard was true, they don't sell it anymore. I think they were probably running into the same issues where we were, where it was just a hassle and people weren't paying and it, it wasn't worth it. So they quit selling it. And when they quit selling it is when we kind of got a lot more people coming here because, you know, that nobody wants to really deal with it and it takes a lot of time. Um, I guess I would recommend that if we do continue to sell it, that we charge fifty dollars a thousand. Most of the time, you know, they get a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars at least. It kind of covers the time it takes and the water and, um, and require that they have, that they pay upfront so that we actually do get paid. Because I don't know if any of them paid in the past. You tell them, you know, I don't accept money. So I tell them, make sure you stop up at City Hall and give them the eight dollars that you owe them or five bucks you owe them. Well, they never did.
And this would be pay in, payment in advance then?
Yes, before they get the water and.
Exactly.
Not accept mailing it to the company because it's just, it's a hassle and.
Can the city take a credit card? Okay. Yeah, no cash, no water.
And we could, you know, just film from the Fire Hall here. And if, if they needed water after hours, I could leave a, a valve set up and then they're on camera on that too. So, you know, so you can kind of monitor it. So I guess I would like the approval.
We actually have that coming up.
Okay.
A little bit later.
We'll leave that till a little later on. So anyone else have any comments or concerns or anything on that? Oh? Well, thanks. It's nice to hear something nice once in a while. Okay. Um, also, I guess, every year I attend the Minnesota Rural Water School in St. Cloud. It's kind of the three-day annual there. Um, I guess I just mentioned it, that I'd like to, uh, attend it again this year. It, I can get water or wastewater hours and it's the big school where kind of everybody goes to. So it's one of my favorite ones to go to and, um. So it's one of my favorite ones to go to and, um, I guess I would like approval to go to it again. What is it, like three hundred dollars or some, somewhere right around there, I guess? I don't know off the top of my head, but it's in the budget for it, so typically I just.
Can I make a motion that we approve, uh, Randy going to that wastewater?
Uh, it's the Minnesota Rural Water Annual.
Minnesota Rural Water Annual.
In St. Cloud.
In St. Cloud.
I'll second that.
Okay. So I have a motion from Councilman Gorder to approve Randy going to the Minnesota Rural Water Association Program or Training, uh, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Uh, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried, so.
All right, that's all I got, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Randy. I don't know if you wanted to say anything about the budget and so forth, uh, in team assistance?
Well, we, I enclosed the budget report for year end in your packet. I'm not going to spend any time going over it right now because we're going to have the whole audit presentation from our auditors next month on how the audit went. They finished up with most of it, so they plan to be here in March. So, um, and then I also wanted to mention that, um, we've been working since June on getting, um, some FEMA grant money for the city, um, due to the storm from last May that caused some damage in town. So that money's just starting to come in and I gave you a spreadsheet of what we've received so far. So right now it's, um, seventeen, a little over seventeen thousand dollars and we have some more to come. So it was a ton of work, but we're getting some money back, so that's good.
And that's just the FEMA grant part of it, huh?
Um, that's just the FEMA, our reimbursement for storm damage around the city. I know Tiffany did a lot of work on it, I did, Randy did, we did a ton of meetings.
And the, the state also gives ten percent?
Yeah, this would be the whole total, both the federal and state totals here.
Oh, okay.
They hold back ten percent till the projects are all completed, but we'll be getting that also.
Okay.
So, yeah. And I got, um, we have the, um, Minnesota Clerk and Finance Association meeting also in March, like the one Randy's attending, so, um, I plan on going to that if that's okay. It's the twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third of March.
Okay. What's the cost on that?
Um, it's three hundred and fifty dollars, I believe. Might be a little less for, um, the program.
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, Joan going to that, uh, program.
No, I'll second.
I'll second it.
Go ahead.
So, have a motion from Councilman Tafe to approve Joan attending the, uh.
MCFOA Conference.
FCM?
MCFOA?
MCFOA Conference and March twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third. Seconded by myself and, uh, so any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. I don't think there's anything else, uh, on the agenda. We can go to new business, uh. We've been notified by MNDOT that, uh, we have a vehicle noise ordinance signed on Highway one fourteen going north or visible coming south, I guess. And it, it doesn't meet their standards in terms of size and we have to replace it. They're, they're quoting us like fifteen hundred dollars to replace it. Uh, the office staff feels that we could probably, uh, go out and buy one, uh, the right size and so forth for a lot less money and, uh, probably Randy would put it up, so. So, I don't know, I was just going to suggest that we maybe table that, uh, for now. I think they wanted an answer by March, uh.
End of March.
End of March or whatever, so. Uh, next on the agenda is to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two, allowing the fire, Starbuck Fire Department Auxiliary to hold a lawful gambling event at the community center for Megan Klein and, uh, and, uh, I guess also for the.
That's coming up separate.
Oh, that's, oh, that's down here, okay, yeah, just.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two to, for, to the Starbuck Fire Department Auxiliary to hold a lawful gambling event at the community center for Megan Klein.
I'll second that, I think you meant just one zero there though.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-three zero two.
So I have a motion by, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two to allow the Starbuck Fire Department Auxiliary to hold a lawful gambling event at the community center for Megan Klein, uh, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Uh, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next on the agenda is to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three to accept a donation from the Starbuck Fire Department Relief Association for a five gas monitor. And, uh.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three zero three.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three, accepting the donation from the Starbuck Fire Department Relief Association for a five gas monitor, seconded by Councilman Christensen. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is to amend Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three fee schedule to change the bulk water fee to fifty dollars per thousand gallons and to establish a more rental fee of sixty dollars per hour and a six-twenty-one caseload rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour for equipment used at the airport per the state requirement for maintenance reimbursement. And that's something that, uh, MNDOT Aeronautical requires that we have some agreement and some fees established, so. And they reimburse us for what, ninety percent of the?
Um, up to a certain dollar amount, usually four to five thousand a year, so, yeah.
So, okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the amendments to Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two seven for the twenty twenty-three fee schedule.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve amending Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven to, for the twenty twenty-three fee schedule and seconded by Councilman Gorder. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Uh, next on the agenda is approve a quitclaim deed for the sale of thirty-three point two-nine acres of city land to Ted and Denise Ruzink. Any questions or discussion on that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the quitclaim deed for the sale of thirty-three point two-nine acres of city land to Ted and Denise Ruzink.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve the quitclaim deed for the sale of thirty-three point two-nine acres of city land to Ted and Denise Ruzink, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Uh, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Uh, approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero four establishing June thirteenth, which is June nineteenth, as a city holiday per, per Minnesota statute six forty-five point forty-four subdivision five. And that state statute prohibits us from doing any business on that day, so.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero four establishing June thir- June nineteenth, uh, June, June nineteenth as a city holiday per Minnesota statute six forty-five point four-four subdivision five. Uh, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, is to discuss the possibility of applying for a DNR grant. Uh, this is something Wintsett, Wintsett looked at. It is quite expensive, um, in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen thousand dollars to write the grant. It can be used multiple years to, if it, to adjust it or amend it. I'm not sure what that would cost or.
Just what the requirements would change, you know, from year to year and use the.
So when we were talking about approvals, uh, grants for the, the park and the possibility of the lighthouse and so forth, it would cost us ten to fifteen thousand just to make the application, so. And, uh, so. That's something the council wants to think about, uh, or whatever, uh.
What was the return on, on investment on that one? If we spent the fifteen thousand, what do we?
It, the grant would be up to three hundred and fifty thousand and it would be a fifty-fifty split between the city and, um, the grant fund. We would pay upfront and then apply for reimbursement. So, I don't know, I, this is the one where the lighthouse would be secondary and we'd have something else as our main focus, which is, um, you know, a great thing. I don't know if we're ready to do it right now, but that's up to the council. I think we would get the funds for the lighthouse separately.
You know, I think in years past, we've applied for these grants and, and there's a lot of people doing it and chances of getting it are, I mean, it's, it's a lot of work for you guys and, and everybody and, and, and sure, the money is good, but it's a fifty-fifty matching grant. So if we get three hundred and fifty thousand or whatever, we got to pay half of that. You know, for a ten to fifteen thousand dollar investment, it's sure it's a good investment, but your chances are not that good, I don't think.
It's very competitive, there's no question about it.
Yeah, so I, I, in my own opinion, I would think that, you know, for like the, the lighthouse, um, I mean, that's our biggest concern right now. At some point, I think we probably will have to look at dredging the Marina again. And maybe that would be the time to apply for something like this. Um, uh, yeah, I don't know, but my personal opinion is, uh, hey, let's see if we can get the lighthouse, none on our own.
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking myself personally that I think we should hold off on, on this right now, so.
One more suggestion to, just make sure we know exactly what we want to do to it because the deadline is like, you know, a month and a half. You just really nail down, this is what we really want to do, then decide that's what you want.
And that's the hard part, such a short time to get it together. Um, but this is something ongoing that they have every year. Yeah, so.
And what was the deadline on that, the end of March?
End of March. So it's gone off pretty quick and we got a lot of this.
Yeah, I.
So.
I'd say.
So if that's okay with the council, we'll just, uh, table that for, for the time being and, uh,
Yep.
Take a look at it later in, uh, in the year, so. Next item on the agenda is to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five, a raffle on June thirtieth for the Starbuck Fire Department and, uh.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty twenty-three. How many zeros are in that? Zero five. Raffle on June thirtieth for the Starbuck Fire Department.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five, a raffle on June thirtieth for the Starbuck Fire Department, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Uh, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. That concludes our agenda.
So will we adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.